Mr. Mayor.
All right.
How come my alarm didn't go off?
Oh, my God. Is this for AM?
All right. Let's go ahead and call to orders. I didn't say that part yet. We're calling to order the City Council Business Meeting of October 22nd, 2024. If you'll join me, Steve is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Steve. Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I totally wish you were in my kindergarten class.
You just started it off like my students. I was present.
Do they do that? Do they say, here we go?
No, they start off, well, once they're singing the National Anthem, inevitably, every time.
All right. Thank you. Could we, we'll bring the meeting back to the table and official, and could we start with a roll call of officers, please?
Westwood?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Daniel?
Yes, here.
Keith?
Present.
Miller?
Here.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Here.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Conley, a second by Councilmember Ronnie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. It can be for one or both meetings, motioner's preference.
I move to approve the minutes of September 24th and October 8th, 2024. I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Ronnie, second by Councilmember Conley. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. Roll call.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Mayor's Reports. So first of all, you will have noticed in the packet, in fact, I can, let me go ahead and do a share screen for those who may be online and haven't seen it, although it'll be sideways, or maybe it won't. I thought I had it here. Okay, stop the share. All right. I don't have it in front of me. Sorry. I thought I had it downloaded up and ready to go. There is in the agenda, unless I see it here. That's the pool. That's the minute. Actually, here it is. It's in the packet. I'll just share it from the packet for those who are interested. I did have a pull-up. Sorry.
Page of it?
On the agenda, it is on page, let me look to make sure it wasn't before the minutes. Nope, it was after the minutes. There is a letter, and just to provide, so it's on page apologies, apologies.
Twenty-five. Is it the one from Heather Quinn?
It is.
That's page twenty-five and forty-three.
Okay. Well, thank you, because it'll get, I'll get there a lot quicker. There we go. So on page twenty-five, so the short version is, let me go back to my share here. I had it. I just do a share screen, share screen, share. All right. So it is just sharing the important part of it. Okay. So what happened is when the, when Red Lodge survey went over, this is on Yellowstone Wildlife Sanctuary, and so you will recall, if I scroll down just a little bit, this was the original reference diagram that we used when we did the motion. When they went over to do the survey, so the blue parts were the part that the city owns that we were exchanging in, in exchange for this part that the wildlife sanctuary owned over here, which is adjacent to the recycling center, which is why the city had an interest in there. You'll notice that there's a big chunk of land down here, a significant chunk of land, a .32 acres, that during the initial GIS document that Mike put together for us looked like the YWS was sitting on land that was actually not their land. When they went to do the survey, turns out this part is already on their land, so that did not need to be exchanged. Furthermore, when he drew this line, he did it hugging the road, and when public works looked at it, and when the surveyor looked at it, they said, you can't build a fence right there because then you won't be able to use the road in the winter or plow it or something. So what they basically did is they changed that, so here's the kind of before picture, to the document. Here's the document. I apologize that it's landscape in here, but you can see that this line does not follow necessarily exactly the road. So the question then came, I went to our attorney and said, okay, do, do we need to put this one in front of council again? And he said, no, that's just executing and taking care of, you already have the approval. And I said, yes, but how do we have a paper trail here for future generations because we're all going to die? And so what we came up with is, let's do, let's do a letter. So I wrote over the letter, and in that letter, it details what the math is. The city actually ends up slightly better ahead. The blue parcel where the underlying easement is, is actually bigger than it was, so the land numbers changed a little bit. But we actually, if you go through and look at the numbers, anyway, so the number shifted, and it's basically a letter to Heather, just to cover our tails, that said, Heather, here's how the new number shook out. Is there anything here that changes your evaluation and your broker report that you did? And she reported, and she said, no, it does not. And so, so that's the part up. I was able to review it, and it does not materially change the findings. And so we've gone ahead and recorded that, and then what I'll do is I'll go record this letter, A, it's in the minutes now, and B, we'll record it with the title over at the county, just to kind of cover our tails on all of that. And so that, apparently, that's just a normal thing that happens, is when they go to survey, it doesn't match the thing. Councilmember Keith, question?
Does the city own that land that they're on already, and they're just using it?
No.
No.
The, let me go down to the drawing so I can
Well, it's a wildlife and deed.
So does the city own which land?
The land that the
This land up here?
All of it.
All of it.
So, no, no. So this, if I go down to this document, all the stuff that is in yellow is actually owned by the Yellowstone Sanctuary.
Okay, so it's not owned by the city.
No, no, no. So that is sanctuary land that was, that was donated years ago. But if you look at that diagram, see if I can make it slightly bigger.
Okay.
I can't. If you look at that, see how it cuts across the bison pen? That was where the problem is.
Yep.
So their rules state that they have to have distance between the animal enclosure and the outside fence.
And I understand all of that. Someone just asked me if the city did not own that land already.
Not in the last 50 years.
Okay, so it does not?
Yeah.
Think I can get back to that?
So the only, the only thing, the only thing that changed was these blue and that green, except for, it turns out that this blue, the city didn't own anyway. That was just an error we had going into that. So what we basically traded was this piece for this piece.
Yep. Yep, understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank, any other questions on that? So anyway, we didn't know where to put that in, so I just put it in Mayor's Reports, basically, to get it in the minutes, and then we'll file that letter with the county, so 100 years from now, when somebody goes to look it up. They'll say, well, that didn't match what was in the minutes, then they will see that we did, in fact, match what was in the minutes.
Appreciate that.
All right. Event-wise, we approved the Christmas stroll, and that came in for the Christmas stroll this week. Most of that, there's a two-part to that. Most of that, oh, let me go ahead and stop this share. I'm sorry. Oh, that, that's not my screen. That's the So we approved the Christmas stroll, which is basically just relaying on to the state that we are fine, but there was also a related road closure. So that is done. I wanted to share with the full council, admin and finance had it, there is a budget report that came out that we, that we reviewed in our staff report. It's basically a monthly report. What we will do is Lonnie will run that each month after the final pay period in the month. So our warrants go out at the first of the month, that second Tuesday. So when a month is complete, the payroll is complete per month, she is going to run that report out. She gives it to all the department heads, and we go through and look at it from a department head standpoint. She will also send that out to the council. There will also be a copy that's in the, for public consumption folder outside. That's just so that you have an ongoing insight into what's happening budget-wise. I will remind you that it will not necessarily be a linear progression. So if there's like five out of 12 months, that doesn't necessarily mean we're five out of 12. One of the things we're going to find out is things we need to next year allocate. Maybe we need more on this line item and less on that line item, sort of some things that, just to kind of help us make sure we don't miss things through our budget. Basically, what we're working on is next year's budget already, all the way through this. If there's a question that you want to see, there is a report that can be run on a department-by-department basis. If we do the whole thing, it's like a way too many pages. But if there's a question on like a particular month, you see a line item go up for a particular department, and you say, why did that department spend so much that month? Then you can send a request, and Lonnie can print that department out, and you're welcome to review. Or probably the most appropriate way to do it is send the question to somebody on admin and finance and have them pull that up. But it's publicly available information. It's out there. It's just the new, the new report is a little different than what we get our annual planning with. If you have any questions on how to read it, reach out to anybody on the admin and finance team, or me, or Lonnie, and we'll be happy. But it's basically just every month that'll, that'll go out for, for the previous month. We may even include it in the, like in the, in the net report for the last month. We'll just include that as part of the I, what I don't want to do is make the packet so huge.
Well, we can post it on the website.
We can, we can post it to the budget page on the website, just so you can see that.
That'd be awesome. Yeah, I think that'd be great.
So, anyway, wanted to, wanted to make folks aware that that's out there, just to give you a little bit more insight on a month-by-month basis. And again, as you review that, just remember, it's not going to be linear. Certain things are going to be higher in the summer, certain things are going to be higher in the winter, et cetera. Second November, the second of November, at noon, the Rotary is going to be setting up the Veterans Cross at the hospital, so anybody who'd like to participate in that. It's not, it's not strenuous or difficult. It is certainly a task that goes a whole lot more easily with lots of sets of hands. So anybody who'd be interested in participating, just show up at noon on the second. Is there anything you want to add to that? Councilmember Conley?
If it actually snows, we're going to need shovelers to find the hole to put everything in. So we know that they're five feet apart and they're six inches off the sidewalk, but it, they still can be a challenge. So the snow could make it a little more physical.
There may be a couple of extra jobs that
Yeah.
It's not been a problem, wasn't last year? We'll be all right.
There wasn't any snow last year.
All right. EDA grant on the roads. So we had a, we had a meeting. I apologize. I'm trying to get the timing set to this. We may have brought this up last time, but Mike and I met with the folks from the state on the EDA grant. We have been accepted to continue in the process, and so there were several just kind of additional forms and questions that we had to fill out. We have not officially been granted, this is the, that money for the roads next year. We're still working under the assumption that we're going to get that, but we're dotting all the I's and crossing all the K's, and it's the federal government, so it takes time. Questions or comments on that?
How much was that?
About $4 million. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to turn a lot less than that into a lot more than that. Anytime we can get a dollar out of a dime, we go for it, and it makes sense.
And it makes sense.
Yeah. And we, we don't do it just because, but if it's something we need, like, you know, roads, we try to get it for that. Sidewalks, the lifting is all done on the sidewalks, so you'll actually see, for those of you who are on the admin team, when the warrants come out next time, you'll see a, you'll see a claim for that. So next is the grinding. The grinding is a slower and lengthier process. Those who've had a chance to walk on Main Street, if you've been like in front of Whispering Pines and that shop, you can actually close your eyes and walk from one end to the, one block to the next block. And it works. And so there's still a couple places, they're kind of prioritizing the grinding based on where the biggest ankle rollers are right now. And they'll do it as long as the weather lets them, and then they'll resume in the spring as we get there. But one of the things we learned is MMIA, our insurance company, paid out $280,000, not to Red Lodge claims, but to claims within the state of people tripping on municipal sidewalks. So one of those things, it was not, was not ours. And, and our goal is to not have it be ours, and if it does go to court, the first thing the judge says is, what have you done to mitigate this system to make sure this doesn't happen? And the correct answer is something. The wrong answer is nothing. So I feel pretty good about that on lots of levels.
Mayor Dave?
Yes.
You know, when MDT widened or messed with Highway 212, they put those corner things that people trip on, is that our responsibility when they trip on those? I know they've painted them yellow and done everything they can to highlight those.
So there's, there's, that's, that's a longer conversation than that. So the answer is, anybody can sue anybody for anything. That is their responsibility, not ours. They have deeper pockets, so that probably makes them a bigger target, too. More importantly is that those corners are probably the wrong corners to have
Well, we know that.
in a town in Red Lodge, which everybody has known from the beginning of time. One of the things, and one of the reasons we took the approach we did on the sidewalks, is we met with MDT early this spring and went through and reviewed the sidewalks all the way along, including the corners, including the roundabout. And basically, we talked about what needed to be done to fix it. And their response is, come talk to us when you've done what you can with the stuff that's your responsibility. So sections that are less than six feet are our responsibility. So what we have done is, we have a letter that we sent off to them saying, here's what we've done, and we've done what we can, and now it's your turn to come step in. The goal was to approach that under what is called the maintenance funding, which is we reached out to the department head, which is who we've been talking to and who we've had a couple of conversations since then, and have them come in and report a few panels. So for instance, down by the antique store on the corner, there's two or three panels there that this are going to require more work. In fact, when they were shooting the foam in, they got concerned because they were shooting so much foam down there that they thought, somebody's going to go down and try to open their basement, and it's not going to open. Turns out, there's a mine shaft underneath there. So anyway, we reached out to them about coming in and pouring their panels, and they were very amenable to the conversation. You've done what you can do, whether we can get that done this year or the spring. Reality tells me it'll likely be the spring, but we haven't given up on this year yet, but they've agreed to come do that. But that's out of the maintenance budget, which means it turns around.
Yeah.
Back to your question about the corners, that's basically redoing all the sidewalks and redoing the corners. We've been told that's probably six to eight years out, because that's their bureaucracy budget and money that goes through there. So this is a patch that holds us through until we get to that point. I don't anticipate those corners are going to get addressed prior to that, but we will certainly continue to look for opportunities. We're trying to get approved right now to paint hash marks in the crosswalks to go out as far as the parallel parking lines are.
Great.
So kind of like a painted bump out.
Great.
And then part of that will also be depend as we do the, the master plan and the downtown master plan, kind of what guidance is there. But those corners are going to be very heavily discussed in that, just the supporting documentation that we need to change that. Did I understand the question properly and thrown up at it?
You did.
All right.
I assume that if somebody sues MDT because of those corners, they might get done sooner.
That feels like a loaded question. I would say that, that I, I dare some comment. Any other questions on that?
Can I just ask how the downtown master plan is coming along?
It is. It does not, it does not have
Is there a timeframe?
It does, it does not have a due date, or the, the, the planning board continues to work on it each week. And so those are the second and fourth Wednesdays for those who are interested in coming in. As they get a draft done, that draft will be posted online for everybody, and ultimately, council has to accept.
On that note, when we get to the point where they have a final draft completed, will there be a chance for council to review and then send back?
Absolutely. I wouldn't, I wouldn't call that the final draft. I would call that the draft that council gets
Okay, fair enough. The draft, yeah.
So, so basically, council is the body that approves it. So when you guys go through that, if you want us to sign off on it, go change this, or we'd like to see this.
Mostly just want time to sit and process, because it's going to be a hearty document.
Yes.
There'll also be public hearings on it as well.
Yeah. There will be, but yes, council will have that opportunity also. All right. In this upcoming paper, there will again be an advertisement for the Urban Renewal Agency. We have two positions open on that. You'll recall that we read some, we ran the ads a couple times before and didn't seem to have any response. And so we basically said, let us know when you have some folks that may be interested, and we'll rerun the ads. So those will be going out in the paper next week. It's already sent in.
And it'll be this Thursday?
Oh, it'll be in this Thursday. So it's already being advertised. And so if you know anybody who's interested in that, like I said, we, we were just waiting until we knew we had interested people before we ran it. That by no means means that the selections have been made. It just means we had a higher reason to hope that there would be applicants. The other thing I will save, which is the BHA agreement, I'll save that until we get down below. No updates from Tetra Tech yet on the demolition of the Rocky Fork Inn. Yeah, so that, Tetra Tech is handling the bid. We, we did have a conversation with the state, who's in charge of the federal money. And there are some, the, the story has changed a little bit about what was changed before. Basically, they, you're not allowed to put the first shovel in the ground until such time as you know 100% how the demolition is being paid for. And since some of the numbers are changing, we're just making sure that's correct and handled before we do that. We do have the property marked off with candlesticks now, so hopefully the trespassing and danger factor there will go away. We did get the, there, there actually already was an order in on the gas meter
Okay.
to get that removed, so they're aware of that. We'll validate that before the backhoes go in as well.
That would be good.
All right. I think that's, anything else for me that I missed, folks?
Personal card.
All right. Thank you. With that, what we'll do is we will open for public comment on the agenda. Having said that, as we get to action items, and in fact, even on the council discussion, we will allow opportunities for the public to comment there. But we're, we're sticking with a, with an agenda that we have set forth in our, in our rules of, of the council. And in a couple of months, we'll get a chance to see if we want to tweak or change it, or if this is working out well. But for now, what we'll do is we'll open public comment for this is anything on the agenda. There'll be a time at the end of the meeting where you can comment on anything within the city's purview. So if it's not on the agenda, if you would hold your comments till that time, it would be appreciated. Step up to the podium, state your name, direct your comments to, to me, the chair, please. Everybody else will eavesdrop. A reminder, this is your opportunity to be heard. It's not a Q and A. It's not a discussion. And with that as boundaries set, I'll go ahead and open the public comment for things on the agenda. If you'd like to step up, we'll go to the room first. Seeing none in the room, we'll go to online. If you're online and would like to turn on your camera or raise a hand, going twice, three times, we will go ahead and close the public comments on the agenda. But that will move into the action portion of our agenda. The first one, actually, I'll entertain a motion and then we'll discuss it.
Do you have the date?
I do.
I need to approve the mayor's absence in excess of 10 days from November 23rd to December 7th, 2024.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie, a second from Councilmember Conley. So our charter states that if the mayor's going to be out of town for more than 10 days, requires the permission slash blessing of the council. This is one of those examples I always use to demonstrate the, the, the chain of command between order and councils, who have to ask who to, to go on vacation. My request is that you approve that, so I don't have to go home and tell my wife that there's a problem, because her undergraduate is in forensic science and her master's is in archaeology, so I don't want to tell her we're not going on the vacation.
Where are you, where are you going?
We are going to Lapland and going up and hanging out well inside of the Arctic Circle and hopefully seeing some northern lights.
Okay, wow. All right. What were, what were the dates again?
November 23rd through, technically, just December 6th, I'll be out of town, because the other two days I'll be here, but not for the whole day. So it's really just, it's really just an approval of mayor and absence of 10 days, but, say again?
You going to bring us presents?
I'll bring you a snowball.
Rainier, rainier.
Give you a suitcase.
Any serious questions from the table?
No. Oh, you thought we were kidding. Who's in charge when you're gone?
Oh, good, good point. So there is a council meeting, the second council meeting occurs during that timeframe. I have already talked to the council president, who will be responsible for preparing the agenda and running the meeting that time.
Is it going to manage the city staff? Is there anyone that?
City staff will, my, my second in command will probably be Brian, if there's a question. If there's any questions, if you reach out to Brian or Lonnie.
Perfect.
In fact, I'll make it simpler. If there's any questions, reach out to Lonnie, and if she says, talk to Brian, that's okay as well.
Okay.
But we have a good staff. I feel very comfortable. They all understand, A, we're a service organization.
Yep.
B, get things done. C, the same way, every way, above board, transparently. So it'll, it'll operate good even though I'm gone.
So it's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
If it doesn't, then I haven't done a very good job.
Okay. It's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know that
You admit.
It's, it's a, yeah, yeah, that's the one I'll be gone for.
Yeah, okay.
By the way, one of the things we'll want to have on probably that agenda, if not sooner, is just that you'll want to have an agenda item to formally strike the second meeting in December, which is just historically done, because that's Christmas week. All right. Hearing, no other discussion. Can we get a roll call vote?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yeah.
Ow.
Okay.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Enjoy it. Just for fun.
I will entertain a motion for ordinance number 911 for a second reading. We'll have some discussion at the table, at which point we will have a public hearing.
I make a motion to, for ordinance number 911, Second Amendment. Can't be non-city-owned land, public hearing, second reading.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Tupin, a second from Councilmember Conley. Is there any discussion at the table prior to going to public comment?
I think that we, we did a good job getting it put together and made sure that all the details were covered. So again, this is mostly to clean up a pretty existing ordinance. It's not mean that it's not something that can be addressed further down the road either.
All right. Thank you. With that, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. This is specific to ordinance number 911, Second Amendment, and ordinance to amend, clarify, and revise the Red Lodge overnight parking and use of city-owned lands, including dedicated parks and rights of way for overnight camping, Title IV, Chapter 1, Section 9 of the Red Lodge Municipal Code, and revise the penalty and revise the penalties for noncompliance. And with that, we'll open the public hearing. Again, if you'd like to comment, please step to the podium, state your name, general location. Seeing none in the room, go to online. If you can turn on a camera or unmute so we know you're interested, raise a hand. There's multiple different methods. All right, hearing none going twice, going three times, we'll close the public hearing. All right, back to the table. Any additional comments? Let's go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupe?
All right, I will entertain a motion for resolution number 3667.
I will motion, or motion to talk about resolution number 3667, Northwestern Energy Solar Grant Application, Solar Carport.
I'll second that.
All right, there is a motion from Councilmember Tupe and a second from Councilmember Conley. Discussion at the table.
Yes, so one thing after doing a little bit more thorough research and budgeting, came thanks to Mike and Alan and a lot of the folks on Sustainability Board, found that we can actually move the solar panels that we had two resolutions for, two different grants for, from the restrooms onto the carports. So being able to get all of the solar panels into one space, a lot more effective, wouldn't need a variance, and also just less of an impact on that area. The one other thing that we have discovered in doing so is the cost of the project is substantially more than originally anticipated, which we knew that every week that we spoke about it, that price tag went up. But now we have some really hard numbers that I really appreciate the due diligence going into it. Originally, it was a $44,000 project. Now it is a $125,000 project. With that being said, there is a 10% grant, or a 10% match that we would be providing at the city level. And because we have now consolidated it into one grant and one application, we can utilize the match funds that were already allocated in our budget as recommended by the Resort Tax Committee, which we have $5,000 for this fiscal year. And then if we added $5,000 to the next fiscal year, along with another 2,500, we feel pretty confident that that's something that we can make room for in our budget to add a nice asset to our city. So that is where we are sitting there. So we would like to make an amendment to resolution 3667, the sixth whereas, a commitment of $5,000 matching funds with sustainability grant that was recommended by the Resort Tax Committee and subsequently included in the 2425 Red Lodge annual budget. In terms of the actual authorization to submit a grant, this still covers both of those features essentially because it's still Solar Carport. And then in terms of the therefore, and now it be resolved, same deal. It is the same grant application that we'd be applying for for both, but now can cover both of those grants into one.
So to understand, there's a motion to change the dollar amount in the second, third to the last whereas to 12,500 as opposed to 3,500. And furthermore, probably strike subsequently included in the Red Lodge annual budget because that 12.5 is not included in the annual budget. We're just saying we will commit to pay.
I just put 5,000 from the 2425 annual budget?
Oh, you've got an updated copy that I don't have. I apologize.
That's okay. Honestly, I think I took this from the same copy that we were both working off of, but it looks like you have more whereas' than I do.
Yeah, yours is in a different order than, I'm looking at what was in the packet.
Are you looking at the second one? Are you looking at?
No, I'm at 3667.
I'm going to go based off what's in the packet because that is what the community got. So let me rephrase my amendment.
Yeah, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4.
You're looking at 3668, I'm guessing.
It's the 8 whereas. Oh, maybe it's. What page in the packet is that that someone knows?
32.
Thank you very much. And then it's the 8 whereas.
What do you want me to do? 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, yeah.
Okay, so I'll put it to the table. Do we want to do instead of 3,500, make it 1250 or 1200 or 12,500? And then just, as, because I will say, I don't want to necessarily have a whereas based that the Resort Tax Committee recommended a budget higher than they did, so.
Or we do 5,000 in the financial year.
Financial year. Yep. I think that makes more sense. And then next year, we can address how we find the additional 7,500.
Doesn't it get to the point where $125,000 to save $300 a year doesn't make any sense to me?
So I think it's the extension over years that this will be providing energy, as well as just an asset for the community that is something that both tourism and locals can appreciate. And also more so thinking, we are spending $12,500 on something that's going to save us money over the years, and we are getting in return a $125,000 project. I think that might be a different perspective kind of considered.
Like Dave said, I think the budget had it $300 for last year that we spent on the plug-ins there. So the city's been spending 300. Now we're going to be spending 12,500. So it's going to take us 40 years to break even. And that's what I'm looking at, the real numbers. I know it's a great feel-good thing, but I'm just looking at the numbers thinking, that doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, at my house, would I spend that much money to save that much money? No, I wouldn't. So I'm not sure that, I'm just, you know, and it needs a carport because they get rained on, right? So that's not good for.
That's where the solar panels.
That's where the solar panels would live.
So you have to build a carport for the solar panels?
It's a two-in-one feature. Essentially, if solar panels, it'll take the park.
We could have put it just out there on a pole and it would have been a lot less expensive, but this looks a lot nicer and it's usable over the, you know, it's not taking up park. Yeah, it's not taking up park space because you have a carport over.
And do I understand, because we had the other resolution for the Lions Park restroom, but is that including that? So the tour together?
Essentially, yes. So we're going to be getting rid of 3668. All of that match fund will now be piled into one. And that is also why this project has gone up substantially in cost. So instead of the original being the carport and then also the restrooms and both having their own individual matches and their own individual grants, now merged into one, and that's also why the expense has gone up.
So are you still putting solar panels on the restroom?
No.
So it's all going on the?
It's all going on.
The original, the original design was 23 panels. By doing the carport, they have 36 panels. And now that translates into the electrical, which is why it's more expensive. I think it's, I think it's worth saying that the resolution, what we're doing is authorizing a resolution to apply.
For the grant.
For the grant. And basically, so what we're doing is saying, yes, and in doing so, we are implying or saying we will come up with the match of 12.5 to do that. So that's, so there's a couple, this is still, we haven't accepted the grant. They haven't offered the grant. We don't know. The early, I can't trace the exact trail of this, but when the original project was put together, I don't remember if that $44,000 was based on, here's how much grant money they have available, or how much. But what happened is, if they got in, as they put together the cost of just, hi, I'm Dave. I'm going to go buy a carport in front of my garage. Well, that carport is not designed for commercial standards, nor to support solar panels, nor to. And so this was the most cost-effective way to hit both of those projects, which is the bathrooms and the carport chargers.
And the bathrooms use electricity, or is it just for the overhead lights?
They're a lot easier to clean if the lights work.
Lot of other things.
They're also heated, aren't they?
That's why I wondered if they were heated as well.
So, but having said that, your point and your question is completely valid and something you get to introduce in conversation and factor into your decision. So, thank you for that.
Do, I mean, before it was 23 panels between both projects, is that right? Do we need 36?
I, Mike is not here to speak. He wrote up a report when he talked to the folks, pardon?
Alan's online.
Yeah, but he was not, it was the engineer from Northwest who came back with the number of 36.
Okay. I just didn't know.
And so actually, I guess.
Where the number came from, why, why would it be more?
And I gave, who did I give Mike? Oh, I gave it to, I gave it to Cory, has my copies of that. I apologize.
Of the.
And we do have Alan here. So once you guys get done with questions, I will, I will ask Alan if there's any. If you have any.
Yeah.
But that's one, do you want?
Yeah.
I get it back.
Yeah, you can have it. So this is just where the 125 came from. That does include, by the way, a 10% contingency, just to make sure that it covers it, which is pretty standard with public works projects. The only number on here that was not a hard number was when they, when they reached out to the electrician to combine the EV service, the EV chargers and service center into a single meter, the answer we got was it won't exceed $10,000. So that may in fact be a little bit high of a number, but that's still a relatively small portion of the 125. So this is, this does talk about, there's still a page missing from this. There's also a possibility that we would lose, so this doesn't have the estimation on it. There's a possibility that the number of parking spaces would decrease by probably two because those parallel, those spaces underneath the carports would be 90-degree parallels.
And how many do we have?
They're not going to be.
No. Let me count.
So they'll be parallel parked instead of?
I'm sorry, no, perpendicular parked, or 90.
You can look at the math and you can kind of see what Dave's talking about.
Yeah, okay.
So we're actually going to end up losing charging?
Well, no, we'll lose a couple of parking spaces.
Oh, okay, yeah. Versus either, that makes sense.
Because they'll go from a 45 to 90, and so you kind of lose them on either end. Councilmember Miller, thank you.
Last name's Miller, thank you. I think Sandy brings up a very good point that warrants further review. I'd like to evaluate the benefits from this a little bit more in detail because like, so that's a, that's a good point she brings up, and I think, I think it needs more discussion.
I will add, the reason this is on our agenda to this time is my understanding is the date for this particular application is November 1st. So, so we can say, again, there's still a future date where we say, think, you know, we don't want to accept the, we don't want to accept the thing. But, but, but again, it's valid point.
It is.
So what I hear with this is that we'd like to know essentially long-term benefits and how long it would take for this to pay off. And ideally, if we can get this, because again, this is just permission to submit for it, and it could be something that if we find out that in the next month, maybe we ask for a report at our next council meeting, and at that point, we could choose to withdraw. Does that seem like a fair, reasonable?
Well, you know, this is a resolution to get the grant written and submit. So we're not, we're not agreeing to do it just because we're asking for it. So I'm okay with the resolution at this point.
Okay.
But if in fact we are granted the grant, then we definitely have to have a discussion on return on investment.
Yeah, for sure. So I have two questions for Alan, Beth, if you guys don't mind if I read them.
Councilmember Miller, do you have anything you want to add to Councilmember Conley's comment? All right, Alan, are you available and able to come off mute for a moment, sir?
I am, thank you.
And if, if you're in a position to turn on your camera, it would be appreciated. If not, we understand. If we'd rather you not, please don't. Go ahead, Councilman.
So Alan, just for some rough ideas of kind of timeline as well as the payoff, because I know that you usually are very good about having data of what the timeline would look like for those payoffs. Any chance you have a number of when we could see returns at the city level?
I sure do. And I want to reiterate that the 10% required match is not a guarantee. That's just based on historically what they have offered us from the last two projects. Yes, I do. So the payback period went, this is sort of back of envelope math, but it went from one and a half years payback period to four years payback period. Also, I can answer some questions which I heard recently. What is the change in the total power of the solar system? It went from 14.4 kilowatts to 14.5 kilowatts, so call that unchanged. As to the change, if any, in the number of parking spots, it went from four parking spots to three and two halves parking spots because, yeah, it went from, you know, perpendicular parking to 90-degree angle parking. So it's just matching that geometry. And, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
If I may, Alan, so let's assume for the point sake of discussion that the city's match would be a 10% match in order to accept this grant, and we're basically representing that we would find a way to make that 12.5 work. You're saying we would recoup 12.5 over the cost of four years?
Uh, that's, let's see.
That's, that's three grand a year that we'd be paying out in electricity otherwise.
Well, we'd be getting 30 or 40% back of what we paid out, the 12.5, in federal rebates. And the 30 versus 40 question has to do with whether or not the IRS categorizes Red Lodge as a formal coal town to get the added 10%.
This is just supporting, we need to put this on hold. There's just too many variables, too many things to review. I mean, we went from 300 to 3,000, and now we got the IRS involved.
Well, he's talking about rebates that we'd be receiving in return.
Okay. I guess I'd like to know the details of those. I mean, it's not to say we're going to get a rebate, but by who and when and?
IRS, X, Y, file taxes. It's a direct pay, so talk to your lawyer on that. I've gotten those credits personally.
Yeah, well, there's a difference between an individual and municipality, or municipalities that don't pay federal taxes eligible for tax rebates?
It's called the direct pay option, and yes.
A follow-up question for you, Alan. If we did pass this with the assumption of a 10% match, and you submit this on November 1st, what would be the turnaround that we would likely hear from Northwestern where if we do need some follow-up information for some of our council members to officially accept, we can figure out what that timeline actually looks like in terms of saying, yes, we will take this, or no, we will not?
Great question. It typically has taken between five and six months, so call it April or May of 2025.
So we have some time to follow up. And so Doug and Sandy or anyone else at the council, would you feel comfortable putting together any of your? Because that's the other thing too, is once Alan has the go-ahead to put this in, we can then review his grant and then also come up with our list of questions that we can either send to Alan or other entities that may be, it might even be Northwestern because likely a lot of those benefits would be coming from them, and these are their programs.
And it sounds like he was, he was assuming that it would be a 10%.
Yes, there's the assumption. So is there also the potential we could get away with 5,000, Alan?
Ooh, I can't speak for Northwestern Energy, but historically, it has been 10% for us in the last two times that we have been awarded grants. I think the time for that for the pool is 15%.
Okay, Alan, was the, was the original 44,000, was that because they stated this was a dollar amount they intended to give away? Or was it just the back of an envelope of how much does it cost me to put in panels and buy a carport?
That was based on the cost of solar panels plus $10,000 for the structure to hold the solar panels, the carport, you call it. And that included an assumption of 13% roughly required match, just to give us a little bit of wiggle room.
Okay, I have another question too. Does this include any batteries to store the power or exactly?
Just become our batteries. Do, we put it back to the utility, do we not? We backfeed it and get credit for it?
Yeah, exactly. And because this is less than 50 kilowatts, we are able to fall under the net metering mathematics for charging.
But during the winter, we're going to have zero, so there's still going to be expense.
It's not, it's not zero, but, but, but the answer is we would, and it also offers, opens up the opportunity where what we realize is from this is not just the use, not just the power that's being. where what we realize this from this is not just the use, not just the power that's being utilized by the chargers, it's the power that we're feeding into the grid and system.
Right.
So, so that we're paying for less electricity as a city.
We'll still be paying for electricity, but less. So the savings isn't a hundred percent of what, in other words, it's not a hundred percent of what we have been spending. It'll just reduce how much.
No.
And then, no, it will. Go ahead, Alan, I'll let you.
Sure, thanks. Uh, no, this is based on historical, uh, consumption of electricity on those two sites, which are being combined into one. And it's, the way it works for the, the net metering is how much you produce, um, gets offset, from how much you consume, and it's ballparked to be a hundred percent by Sundance Solar based on historical records. And so here's the thing, so yeah, you produce a lot more in the summertime, and you, uh, produce a lot less in the wintertime. Luckily, by Northwestern Energy, we can set the, which date of the year, uh, most likely, we're gonna choose February one, uh, for it to kind of reset. And so that's based on, starting approximately February one, uh, extending for the next three hundred sixty-five days, that's when we're most likely to be producing, um, um, all of the amount that we consume, uh, because the months leading up to February one are dark months, and so that allows us, uh, time to consume all the electricity that we've produced, uh, in the previous summer. If that makes.
Are we going to have to, um, clear the snow from the panels? Or are they gonna be, with an angle that, that we had an angle, self-cleaning?
No, it's, it's angled to optimize the, um, solar, uh, incidence, you know, angle of what it, and so the snow typically just, I mean, it, it melts and it just slides off. And so when does it snow? It doesn't snow in May, June, July, August, which is when you make the most solar energy.
All right, I'm, um, in the, in the interest of time, um, is there any last questions for Alan?
Yeah, Alan, um, I am just looking at the initial cost that we had, you, you had provided us with some, um, numbers in the, in the beginning, and so that ten percent, if we put in a hundred twenty-five thousand, that's twelve thousand five hundred, and then you had a direct pay federal credit of approximately thirty percent, which brings it down to eighty-seven fifty. Is that accurate to say, or is that just an unknown at this point?
No, thirty percent is for sure. Uh, that's, that's guaranteed through, uh, let's see, ten years since twenty, uh, twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. I don't remember when, but if you don't know, that's a for sure thing. The only uncertainty there is if we're also gonna get added, uh, ten percent for being a formal, uh, coal community. Oh, you might also get. What was that?
I don't think. I'll tell you. So it's possible that it might be an additional ten percent, so it would bring it down even further, for, so our match would be eighty-seven fifty, less that other ten percent for the coal community potentially?
Yeah, that's right. And there's also another ten percent added for domestic steel content, the guidelines of which haven't been set yet by the IRS, as far as I know, maybe they have. It's probably a question for your tax person.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this, I'm gonna bring this back to the, oh, I'm sorry, question, I mean, catch up for you, was there a question?
I answered my question.
Okay, I'm gonna bring this back to the table. Uh, thank you, Alan. Uh, you can go back on mute now. Um, just to state where we are, there was a motion on the table for three, six, six, seven. We have a motion, the current motion is to amend the whereas. Um, Councilmember Tupe, would you like to restate the motion as to how you would like it to read?
Yeah, I would make a motion to amend whereas number eight. A commitment of five thousand dollars of matching funds for the grant was recommended by the resort tax committee, or I should say, the grant, uh, was recommended by the resort tax committee and subsequently included in the Red Lodge twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget.
Okay, how does that amendment address the potential twelve thousand five hundred we need to come up with?
It doesn't. So what we would probably need to do is add a whereas. Whereas, City of Red Lodge, uh, would agree to budget in the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, or annual budget for the additional seventy-five hundred for matching grants. Matching funds.
May I suggest that rather than we will, that we will seek, or we will attempt, or some, or something, us committal?
That's great, yep. So let me write that down second.
And do we want to consider that thirty percent, um, direct federal pay, um, lower the amount?
I, I don't think it changes this amount based on the earlier calculations. Basically, my understanding of these is basically what we're doing when we're applying for a grant, the resolution is saying, assuming our assumption of ten percent is accurate, we will come up with our part. And they just evaluate that in as part of their, their grant. And if they come back and say, you need to come up with eighty thousand, then we say, thanks for pointing. And that's a very real possibility. All right, well, thank you for your patience. Uh, we're gonna give Councilmember Tupe just a minute to formalize her amendment, and then we'll.
Don't want me making it up off the top of my head?
Well, it's easier to have it written.
Okay. Okay. Amendment, also the amendment of, uh, an additional whereas, the City of Red Lodge will seek recommendation of the resort tax committee for an additional seventy-five hundred for matching funds for the fiscal or the twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget. Does that work for everybody?
There's a motion, is there a second? Second.
I'll second.
Second was Councilmember Daniels. All right, discussion on the amendment.
If this is truly a resolution to apply for the grant, why do we have all the money stuck in there?
Because the purpose is to say, we will come through on our part.
That we are willing to make a commitment for this dollar amount to obtain this grant. If it comes in higher, then we have the opportunity to say no. If it comes in that we don't actually want to accept the grant, we can say no.
But that's not what that says. That says that we're going to budget that money.
It says we will seek.
Seek to that part.
We'll ask for it next year.
Yep. If you'd like.
It says we've, we've done five, and that's okay. And then it says, so remember, the first motion we're gonna do is on the amendment, and then we'll go back and we'll, we'll take a vote on the, on, on the now amended resolution presuming the amendment passes. And?
Will you read that? Sorry, will you?
Yeah. You, Beto.
Where? Will you do both of them in one?
First whereas, whereas number eight. Whereas, a commitment of five thousand dollars of matching funds for sustainability grants was, uh, recommended by the resort tax committee and subsequently included in the twenty-four, twenty-five Red Lodge annual budget. And an additional whereas, uh, whereas, the City of Red Lodge will seek recommendation of the resort tax committee for an additional seventy-five hundred for matching funds for the twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget.
And that motion was made by Councilmember Tupe and seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All right. Would anybody like to call a question on the motion? All right, question has been called on the motion. Let's go ahead and vote on the motion to amend. Roll call vote, please.
Conley?
No.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupe?
Yes.
Motion to amend passes. Now we will go back to the original motion, which is Resolution three, six, six, seven, which now covers both grants. Is there any further discussion?
Do we need to do, make any sort of?
Is it just one grant though, is it? It's not two grants?
Yeah, so.
One.
So, I'll try to submit north, oh, um.
We need to make a motion.
I need, I need to ask a question, Alan. This is authorizing the mayor to submit. Um, is it the mayor who submits? Do I submit it? Once you complete it?
Uh, if you want to, I, I can't. That would be identity fraud, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so I'm, I'm just, just validating, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, um, I think this is just the solar carport, EV charging station, the fact that we're gonna, uh, attach the bathrooms in. I don't know it's necessary, but if you wanted to modify the.
Bathroom anymore, though?
No, they're gonna be feeding off of it, though.
Oh, yeah.
No, I think having a solar carport, because that is what we are doing. We are making a solar carport.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? All right, let's do a roll call vote on the main motion about whether to submit a grant.
Conley?
No.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupe?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you for the good conversation on that. Now, and thank you for being available for questions. All right, um, I will entertain a motion on what to do with Resolution three, six, six, eight, which is on our agenda.
Um, the three, six, six, eight?
Yeah.
I move to strike three, six, six, eight from the, from the agenda and remove it. You're looking at me like I said it wrong?
Well, let's just table it.
Just table it then.
I'll second.
Okay. I motion to table three, six, six, eight.
And I'll second.
All right, there is a motion to table Resolution three, six, six, eight, as it is now superfluous with a second by Councilmember Daniels.
Table forever, okay, so we're gonna have to bring this up. I'll second.
All right, you, you're, you're thirding it, because. Councilmember Daniels beat you two down. Any discussion further? All right, let's get a roll call vote just to make it official.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupe?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution three, six, six, nine.
I move to approve Resolution three, six, six, nine, a resolution of the City of Red Lodge dissolving the Red Lodge Pool Committee.
And I will second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Daniels. Is there any discussion the council would like to have, or would you like me to address the report that was provided from the pool committee?
Oh, yeah, you, that, yeah. And then I know there was some correspondence too, but I understand that Jack.
Yeah, so, so the pool committee, that, 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 this action, um, to, uh, dissolve the pool committee was actually one made by the pool committee. They felt like they had changed the charter. This is actually the resolution, the, the result of two separate resolutions that had passed over time, and I believe those are referenced in the resolution. There was one resolution passed that had to do with fundraising, a second resolution passed provides some outside guidance into the pool. Um, it was deemed by that pool committee that they had fulfilled that, and it was time to, um, back out of their role. Um, we have a public works director that manages that, and the pool is included in our parks, so this could be, the public path for input could happen through our regular parks board, uh, which is what it was historically prior to this. They did turn in a, a final report, uh, that talked about the, the history of it, um, some paths that they laid forth as far as staffing. Uh, again, it was just an advisory. Uh, it was originally the pool committee, which is primarily fundraising, um, and then also that was counter to just the city deciding they were building a pool. And then there was an advisory committee kind of directing staff. Um, at that point, we really didn't have a, a public works director, uh, that had room on their plate to handle that, and so there was a, a welcome need for that input. They also included within that, uh, a total of their, uh, fundraising and what they contributed, which is pretty significant. This is stuff that's been posted before, but in phase one, they contributed, uh, three hundred and forty-three thousand. In phase two, they contributed over a million dollars. Uh, basically, just for history, that was a lot of the donors said, um, you city pay for the pool, and we will pay for all the frills and extras. And so the things like the splash deck and the slide and, and all of those additional things were part of that phase two. Additionally, um, they started, Ronnie, don't let me lie here, um, they have a, a pool endowment, uh, which, which is set up to basically help offset the cost of operating the pool, just using the proceeds from that as well. They did give us some historical pool usage. Uh, there was some, some discrepancies in the numbers just because of the tracking method that was in place. There was a software change that was made that they don't feel accurately reflected. So just an example, uh, they had three hundred and sixty-two passes that were sold in twenty twenty-three as opposed to a hundred and forty-four in twenty twenty-four. Um, I don't believe their reports indicated that, that there was truly a drop there. Um, it's just a matter of a tracking ability, and they are looking at revisiting what they're gonna do from a software, uh, standpoint there. Uh, there's a budget that's available, um, and, and basically, as they close it out, they're just turning that money over to the city. In fact, it's paying for, uh, the, the replacement. You'll recall, we have a, a boiler that went out, and, um, we got our money back so long as we upgraded to the new system, and then this paid for the dollars to upgrade to the new system, and also the little cleaner that they have down there. So, uh, like I said, I'm sure I didn't do that presentation the justice it would have happened if Al had been available. Councilmember Tupe? I'm sorry, Keith. She's closer.
Marriage there. Um, could I request that that goes into the packet for next time?
Absolutely.
I think that's really good information that everybody would love to see.
Yep.
Yeah, we will put that entire packet, uh, we'll put that entire presentation into the packet. We did not have it in time for this time, but we will do it for next time. In fact, if you will hand that down, I think you're included on that, but there you have a hard copy for that. Anyway, so basically what this is, is just the committee was created by resolution, therefore, the appropriate way to disband of it is by resolution. Any further discussion from the council? Any further discussion from anybody in the audience? All right.
Laughing at me all the time.
Here, here, hearing none, uh, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupe?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Missed it by five minutes to, to have the business meeting done in the first hour. All right, let, let us move to the, the work session, the council portion of the agenda. Let's start with, um, public health and safety, and for that, I'll go to, uh, Council Chair Conley.
Yes. We had, uh, Keith Schrock reported there, there were a hundred and twenty calls for service last month, um, that they have applied for John Byrne Foundation Grant through Lexi Poll. So we'll see where that goes. Um, we did talk a little bit about the, um, school resource officer. It appears that it's going to be dead from this year, that the school board felt that a police officer for the school shouldn't make more than a teacher. So they were comparing apples and, and trucks together, so, um, we don't, we don't know what will happen, but it's not going to happen this year. We still are looking for grants for a school resource officer, so we'll see where that goes. We also discussed at length, um, the problem that we've had with dogs. We had calls for lost dogs, hurt dogs, and how they're handled. We used to have an MOU with Bear Truth Humane, and that has, uh, lapsed two years ago, so we need to redo that. And we need to get, uh, an MOU with a veterinary clinic. So what would happen is if there is a dog, and the police need to pick up, they would take them to the vet, and there would be a three-day, you know, uh, there boarding at the vet that the city would have to pay for if we couldn't find the owner. And so far, uh, Chief says you've been able to, the owners have all shown up. They really like their animals, of course. So we're not too concerned with that. They would have to pay the vet, you know, pay the vet boarding. Um, we still have the issue if it's a vicious dog and how to handle that. They haven't had any luckily, so, um, you know, we don't wanna go to the expense of training a police officer on how to deal with a vicious dog with a, one of those poles with the catch on the end type of thing. So, um, there are fines. It's against municipal code for a dog to be unleashed. Um, we do need to change some of the municipal code because it keeps saying that there's horses, mules, bulls, and goats, and goats are not allowed in the city, so we need to coordinate, yeah. The zoning doesn't allow goats. They do, they do allow mules. They do, they do allow mules, horses, and the foals.
Only in, like, strictly.
It's restricted, it's restricted, but they're still allowed. The other thing we kind of wanted to pass back around to the city council members that if you had any interest in all, right now chickens are not allowed in the city limits. Do we want to look at that and change that perhaps?
Educational chickens are allowed.
Yeah, right. Educational, in other words, the school can have chickens to, like, you know, but educational chickens are the only thing allowed.
Chickens for educational purposes. So if you had chickens at home and said, "I'm teaching my kids about where eggs come from," that would qualify.
Done. Probably.
I don't know if it would, I think that was pretty specific.
I think that's a bit of a stretch of the zoning. But anyway, if the members here think about it and talk to your constituents to see if there really is a burning need to have chickens in the city limits.
Yeah, we've gotten definitely some feedback from people that would like to have them or that didn't even know they were not allowed. They are having them.
It was pointed out that they would be caged likely at night, and bears and foxes and raccoons love chickens. So it might be an attractant.
I don't know if we didn't.
So anyway, just something to think about. And so that was our revisit chickens.
Yep. Council Chair Conley, may I?
Yes, go ahead, and you want to go on snow removal or dogs?
No, I'm going to talk about dogs. So I have talked to both of the vets, and they basically worked on a verbal agreement on the, basically what the agreement, what we're doing is we're trying to mirror and be on parity with what the county has in place. So basically what happens is dispatch generally advises somebody reporting a dog to take it to the one of the vets. So I've talked to Grizzly Peak, and I've talked to Bear Tooth Vet. And basically what they both want to see, they do not have a contract in place with the county nor have they had one in the city, even though they've done this for years and years. What has existed is the MOU with Bear Tooth Humane Alliance. And what you guys all have is a handout of the last one that was executed in 2020 by Mayor Larson. And what I would like to propose is that next time we meet, there will be a resolution that basically authorizes the mayor to re-sign this MOU. And that puts us in place and on parity with where the county is. Sounds good. So we'll do that action for next time. And is council okay having that for action in the actual part of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So that, it's basically that exact same MOU. We'll just have a resolution that authorizes the mayor to do that. I think sometimes we've just authorized the mayor without having a paper trail, and I think the paper trail is cleaner.
Do you think that we should do it for longer than two years?
Aren't there, are there, aren't all of our other MOUs, sorry, can you get that up?
Five years? Oh, there's no, there's no all.
They're not to exceed five years, so if council would like to make the arrangement, did they make the change, would that be for five years?
I think that would be wise.
I think as long as Bear Tooth Humane Alliance is okay with it.
Yeah, and I will check with them to see if they're okay with that.
And the last was the snow removal municipal code, which we had a discussion that there are on Broadway, some businesses that aren't open in the winter, and as we're walking down the sidewalks, there's snow, and then it builds up, and then it becomes ice very quickly. There is the municipal code that they can get a written warning for 24 hours, and after 24 hours, the city can go in or cause someone to go in and remove the snow and send them a bill. And if they don't pay the bill from the city within 30 days, it could go on their property tax. So there are fines involved in second and third offenses. And we're just kind of looking it over. It pertains, I know a lot of people think it pertains to regular residential areas. It does not. It's commercially zoned or multifamily. I think that, those are the two, wasn't it? Dodi? Commercially zoned and multifamily.
Did it say commercially zoned or just commercial? I don't remember if it's in there, but it's basically Highway T-12 and along Highway 78.
Commercial district, C-1, C-2, C-3, and commercial, the City of Red Lodge District map. It did not need to be.
Yeah.
So what I need is, so I'm going to be preparing a letter to send out to all of the businesses reminding them that this code exists. What I do need is a legal opinion of how long do we have to wait before we send somebody out to clear the snow? I know it's not going to be something like our grass ordinance, which is, our grass ordinance specifically states, "We'll send you a letter. You have two weeks, otherwise we mow it, and the bill goes on your taxes." This is a little bit more generic, and I think my ask would be, I would like to see something more substantial there that says, you know, within 24 hours or, you know, as soon as it's deemed a hazard, maybe is really the.
It says, "In the event that a property owner, tenant, or tenant does not remove snow and ice, a violation of provisions of this ordinance within 24 hours of issuance of written warning, the city may cause the removal."
Yeah, but when it's time to get a written warning.
It says, "In the case of noncompliance, the Public Works Director may remove such snow and ice as not removed within the time prescribed." And that's generic to me, it doesn't really say.
The other thing I'd like to see is an accumulation amount. Like, are we going to go after them for a half an inch?
Well, that's just that, if you get six inches versus six feet, it's a, you have a different answer.
And to me, I'd like to see it based around basically a, I mean, it's public health and safety is what this boils down to. And so, and even though you may plow it in the morning, you may have to go hit it two or three times during the day to do that.
It says, "This is a cessation of snow." So if it stops snowing, that's when the 24 hours.
It's 10:00 a.m. the morning after the cessation of the storm.
After the storm, yeah.
Yeah, so you have to tell 10:00 a.m. that next morning.
If it stops snowing.
So technically, if it snows all day.
You don't have to.
And into the night, you're not required to remove it until the next day.
Which is what it reads.
And that's, that is what it reads. Is that the right answer is the question?
So it could be more of an accumulation versus a.
It could be an accumulation.
That'd be, that'd be, you want to get up at 2:00 in the morning and go shovel in front of your office when there's no one on the street?
Well, it says after 10:00 a.m., so as of 10:00 a.m., if you have three inches of snow.
And I don't know how long is it going to take you to shovel that snow? I mean, I've been out there cranking at 7:00, and it doesn't get me done until 11:00 o'clock.
As long as you're out there shoveling it.
Right.
You're fine.
I look forward to seeing what council comes up with, if they can come up with something that's a little more direct to the purpose and the objective. I will be happy to help enforce it once we have something more clear.
If I get six feet of snow and you want to come help shovel it, I'll be like, yeah, hell yeah.
I'll pay you. You can make it to me and give me a warning? All right.
I've got a corner building, and it's like a lot.
All right, any other, any other meaningful input on snow?
I think that covers it.
All right. Anything else from public health and safety?
No.
All right, let's go to Council Chair Ronnie for Admin and Finance.
So on upward discussion today is Resolution Number 3670, a budget amendment for various funds for fiscal year '23, '24. And it, one of them is, let me just, here, apologize. Get to the, okay. One of them is for the expenditure budget, CBGT Fund, needs to be increased by $382,016, in line item 2396-470-410-300. And the other one is an expenditure budget for fiscal year '23, '24 for the Stormwater Fund, needs to be increased by $1,986,772, in line item 2520-430-200-941. Ronnie, did you want to talk about these? Was that in English?
This is a normal bookkeeping activity.
It is.
Yep, so it's just to clean up the '23, '24 books. We received, what those are, it's the past year payment. So like, the one for the Stormwaters, that was the project. We just didn't budget enough on the expenditure side. We received all the revenue from the loan and stuff on the, on that side of it. Yeah, and then on, same with CBGT.
And again, remember that we will see things like this on the Rocky Fork Inn, where a lot of times those numbers aren't known when we put it together, but we have to go through and do it. And the reason, the reason that it's here for discussion rather than up for action is just our trend of making sure everybody has two weeks to look at it, research it.
And that was mostly what I, why I asked the question. It's not so much, I get it, but also I want to make sure everyone else does too, the fact that this is not actually increasing our budget. This is an additional money coming out of our pockets. This is money that has come to us, and we just didn't have that line items correctly. So just making that very clear for public.
Pass through, making it match up.
Any questions or comments that folks would like to have answered before next time? So that makes more sense? All right, otherwise we'll plan on having that be for action at the next meeting.
So we also finalized some tweaks and stuff like that on the Good Neighbor Policy for the short-term rental holds. And we will have that upward discussion at our next meeting, a resolution to adopt that, because that was part of our ordinance, that those need to be included, and we never come up with a Good Neighbor Policy that was ever passed by council.
Just for clarification, that'll be in the discussion during the council part of the agenda.
Correct, yeah. No, it'll be up, you guys will all get a chance to look at it, review it, and give us some feedback if there's anything we want to change on it.
So, but not for action next time, just for the council portion?
Just for the council portion, yes. And then we also started going line by line through our short-term rental ordinance, working on changing every license to a registration and adding. And we also, the big thing we're going to have to do is all of the, the guidelines are in our zoning and not in the ordinance. So the guidelines in zoning are not enforceable because they're not in the ordinance and they're not codified. So we are going to have a two-hour work session from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. the second Tuesday of November. So if anyone would like to attend, we will be, as Admin Committee, we will be working on that for two hours.
That's basically just a long meeting.
A long meeting, yes. But, I mean, there are always work sessions, but we're giving ourselves an extra hour there to hopefully get through that ordinance so that we can bring it the following, the end of November meeting, upward discussion, in the work session part. Did I forget anything, Chris?
What, David does, are you doing that?
That's the second Tuesday, but it's the second of the morning meeting, so it'll just run two hours instead of one.
So the second Tuesday in November is Veterans Day?
No, 11th is Veterans Day.
Which is the second Tuesday.
No, it's the 12th.
You're the wrong month.
The 12th. Oh, right, why is that 2025?
That was the judge making life easy.
All the way up, my bad.
That's all right. Nobody gets castigated for being human.
From 9:00 to 11:00, we will be. Did I, did I, is there anything else? What?
Who's bringing donuts?
Donuts, I know, right?
All right, anything else from Admin and Finance? Or any questions for Admin and Finance from the rest of council? All right, let's move on to land use and planning, which is, let's go to Councilmember Tupe to lead that discussion.
All right, so land use and planning. One thing we specifically spoke about was draft of the pasture lease. Getting an RFP in the news, not this, is it this week?
Well, it won't go to, it'll go next week because we passed it.
Perfect, just one of this.
If I may? So this is basically, we need to run an RFP. This is for the pasture lease that we had the issues with last year. And council's request is, before you run the RFP, let us see the lease so we can make sure, yep, we're good with that lease, and then we can run the RFP. So this is not really a formal action from council, but I would like just a straw, a straw vote that basically says, yep, we're good with it, and go ahead and run the RFP, and then, Ronnie, we'll run that next week in the paper. We will also need to make sure that we get a notice of termination sent out in advance of that as well. We'll work with the attorney to do that. For the current lease.
Because it doesn't have a.
It's a perpetual because it's one of those that didn't have a termination date on it.
Maybe give them 30 days.
And so you, in your package, you actually had a copy of the lease, and then, and then there's some dates, so there's some dates and stuff that will change. It's just a, there's a reference in it, but.
Just from.
And there was a spelling error that was identified. I'm sorry, is that where you were going?
No, that was not where I was going, but again, was going to say that this is not the finalized lease, but from what I see, besides the spelling of treatment in line 16, on a whole, it's a pretty, feel a lot better about it than the first version that we saw. So I think that, I appreciate getting to see the lease before we put an RFP out there for it because I don't necessarily want proposals on something where people don't even know what they're bidding for, so.
And that actually is, the RFP says that the lease is available for review, so it needs to be there.
So the current, let's see, will get noticed, and then they can also then reapply.
Okay, correct. Thank you. Will that termination need to come through council, I assume?
Nope, it does not. It's just an execution of city business. It's just, just the city attorney and an autograph.
Perfect. So yeah, had a nice discussion on that. Again, lots of feedback from our city attorney as well as some other folks who have some expertise on the subject in terms of ag leases, which is not my expertise. I appreciated very much having that feedback and those examples and that review. So, take a look at that at some point. Any other questions on land lease, pasture lease? Next up, we did have a conversation on the airport in our local agreement. With that, we received a non-finalized copy, but we were getting very, very close to a final copy with all of the edits showing from the previous version. That was a very last, I won't say last minute, but yes, last minute. There's edits still happening even today, so we had an opportunity to take a look at that rough draft, and we are expecting by the next meeting to have a finalized draft and can actually look at that at a council level and get that approved to move forward.
And just to add a little bit of comment that, it was one of those, I think everybody's kind of mentioned that we build our, we do what I can to go out, walk out of here and build our agendas for the next time so we know what our homework looks like between now and then. And we ended up getting some last-minute edits, and we got our feedback from Bridger on Friday, and not in time. What happens is, I'm trying to make sure that our markup copy includes every difference from what was originally there and who made it and who suggested it, so it's comments and highlights. And so I'm trying to merge two documents to do that, and I was unsuccessful. But given the timeline, and what we opted to do was leave it on the agenda, even though it was not there, because that gave us the opportunity to discuss airport. What I didn't want to do is not have airport on the agenda, mention airport, and then have the public come and say, "You didn't say you were going to be talking about the airport." So instead, it's here if we want to talk about it, if there are questions. We did hear, as was mentioned, a lot of public comment today. We also, it will be up for council discussion. It will not be up for action at the next meeting. And we'll take however long it takes to get that discussion in and get the public comment and for council to say, let's move on it. Again, basically what it'll be is council authorizing the mayor to sign the MOU. However, having said that, I thought I printed off several copies of these to hand out to somebody, and I didn't, but we'll get them. I may even get some of this online just so people can look at it and build their cases.
That's a really good idea.
But the guidance that we had from the council, which this actually started from last year, is that the municipalities, specifically Red Lodge, should have the same representation as the county on the board. So that took the numbers from seven to nine. And basically, there were two options. Either the county dropped to two, and they said they were not willing to do that because they have three areas that they represent, and they wanted equal representation because they pay a county mill throughout. And so what we came up with was up to, that the municipalities would appoint up to three representatives. The last-minute feedback was from Mayor DeRutter and Bridger, and his exact wording was, "Prefer seven." So I still have yet to follow up with him and say, I'm trying to build a contract that council has indicated they would authorize me to sign, and I think we can persuade him that seven is okay, that when we change the language to up to, I'm sorry, that nine is okay. I, but that's my job, is to persuade him to do that. The other thing we changed that was in line with that, but not specific, is we changed the definition of a quorum to say that each. is we changed the definition of a quorum to say that each entity must have representation. So, for instance, you couldn't have three members from the county, two members from, um...
Bridger.
Bridger and zero representation from Red Lodge. That wouldn't constitute a quorum. So, each member would have to have at least one member there to constitute a quorum. And we found that, um, that's just a very common thing within our local agreements when we were looking at it from there. Um, the second thing that council had, had in their comments and notes and directed is the airport board shall adhere to the master plan if when approved to ensure FAA compliance. So, some additional clarification today that I'll go in and look at the verification, that the intent was that they wanted it, um, they wanted to adhere to the AIP standards, which is the Airport Improvements Program. They, whether we were or were not part of that, they wanted to basically manage to those standards that the FAA had put forth. Any, any objections or concerns of that from council standpoint? Um, the third one was that it should be clear that a resolution of the legislative body is required to, for the dissolution of an agreement. So, one commissioner couldn't blow it up. It basically had to be a council vote. In the case of a city, it would go to the legislative body to say, "Yep, let's, let's, let's do that." Um, and then the last one was just that the airport shall provide copies of the approved budget to the municipalities, which is similar to like what the county or the library does. So, the library has a budget that they get county money, they get city money, but they provide a budget to us. So, those were the changes that we incorporated based on the, the direction from council and, and basically the group that put together. Questions or comments on that?
To say that we, we had some good conversation about it today and just talking about those different leases and some of the opportunities that are there and just making sure that, again, ducks are in a row and, um, that there's coverage for all parties involved, which I think is...
And so, we did take the opportunity to discuss that and, 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 uh, what I would like to do, I was going to say of council from a, but you know, this is my meeting, I guess you're on the meeting. Um, what I'd like to do is just open this up for just a second. Um, this is one of those things I want to make sure we give the public lots of opportunity to weigh in on. So, um, if there's any feedback that, that the public would like to share with council at this time, even though we will be bringing this up again and there will be council discussion at that point, at least two more opportunities. Um, I would like to provide a moment if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment and then I'll move to anybody online. But, uh, let me go first off and see if there's anybody in the, I don't need the hammer because this is just a work session now. Anybody in the audience here? Anybody online who would like to comment? All right. Again, that will not be the last opportunity that folks have. They had the work session today. We received quite a lot of comment during that work session. And, uh, once we get that agreement out to the public, then there'll be an opportunity to, to comment specifically on the MOU. Um, it is my hope that, that, that discussion will tie to the MOU, that it will tie to, uh, councils authorizing or not authorizing the MOU and that it won't go down rapid holes and, and turn into discussions about whether or not, um, we think an airport is a good idea in Red Lodge or not. I don't think that's the, the issue on the table. Um, but we'll also hear and entertain any conversation that the, the public would like to come forward with, so... Um, all right, anything else from land use?
Um, other than that, we do have a few other things that we're looking forward to in the future. Uh, but obviously with having airport in a local agreement coming up and getting some of those other pieces done, I imagine our agenda will be pretty packed with that for the time being. But we do plan on talking about, um, RV, or considering RV parks within city limits, uh, within our zoning code. So, something that can be monitored, revenue generating, but also zoned correctly. Um, as well as the, eventually getting into MOU some leases, but I know that Sandy is very excited about, so... And then, uh, that's, that's it for the land use and planning at this point.
All right, thank you. Any questions for land use and planning? All right, let's... Well, let's move on to public works. I lost it, but, uh, Councilmember Tubin is, is talking, so that I know that's hers.
Yep. All right, so, in public works, uh, we don't really have anything on discussion on the agenda, but, uh, got a great update from our Public Works Director, just giving us a timeline on the Stormwater Project. And that's going to be wrapping up, uh, hopefully here very soon, inciting snow to get there and hopefully they will win the race. Um, and then otherwise had some conversation around the, the solar grant, uh, as well as reserved parking spaces and handicap parking within town. So, all things that are kind of a tendency at this point, but, uh, good progress being made across the board, so...
Can I make an addition to that? I think, I think we probably will have a, um, an ordinance revise that might increase for next...
Whatever discussion next week.
Whatever discussion.
Yep.
Okay. You want to put that on the agenda?
On the council part?
Yep.
So, that will be, that will be the handicap slash reserve space ordinance.
Yep. That's for the municipal code.
So, that'll be for discussion under other, in the, in the council work session.
Yep.
Okay?
Good call, thank you.
All right. Um, correspondence, we've already added that we will add the pool to the comments, um, correspondence section for next time. Any other correspondence that folks have received that they want to include, mention of, and then we'll include the next package?
Just an email from Pete Capelli and my response, probably because he didn't send it to everybody.
Do, do you?
He said it's mine.
Okay. All right, so, we'll add, we'll add that. That's kind of in relation to the pool. And that was just an initial concern, are we disbanding, are we disbanding a, a board, which is the community's input? Um, and he didn't realize that it was A, if their request, B, that the, that the Parks Board was stepping in and C, that it was going to, he thought it was going to be unmanaged and it's actually going to be managed under public works. And he was, when he got that response, he was much happier.
Oh, yeah. The only other correspondence, can you add that MOU for the lease and BHA? Because that's something we receive copy of, I think.
Well, that'll actually be, that'll be for action, so it'll be part of the package.
Perfect, thanks. We'll be sure.
We didn't take action on it tonight, so we'll get it in there for action next time. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, with that, let's go ahead and open public comment. Another, this is for anything within the city's purview. Anybody is welcome to address the, the table. Everybody else's leaves drop. Um, and we'll start with those in the room. If you stand and introduce yourself, standing in the room, saying nothing in the room. We'll go to online. If you're online and would like to speak, if you turn on your camera or come off mute. All right, hearing none, going twice, going three times to make it official. We'll go ahead and close the public comment. And I learned something new in Robert's rules. As fun as it is, as, as, as fun as it is to ask if anybody would like to help me out with item 12, if we had covered everything on the agenda, we do not require a motion to adjourn. So, meeting is adjourned.
That's my favorite part.